All right, so it's Thursday, February 18th, 2021, 6:00 PM. I'm going to call us to order regularly scheduled Jefferson County Commission meeting. Commissioner Tab, do you mind reciting my pledge of allegiance for us?
I'd be glad to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Tab. All right, we'll jump in. We got a pretty decent agenda tonight, so I want to keep us on track. The first item is approval of the minutes for the January 28th, 2021 draft 2020 impact fee recalculation study.
Mr. President, with your indulgence, I think it would just be as easy to make a group approval of minutes, unless somebody objects. Okay. I move we approve the minutes for January 28th, 2021, which is the draft 2020 impact fee recalculation study, February 2nd, 2021, Budget 101 Public Forum, February 4th, which was a regular meeting. Also, February 4th was the Board of Review and Equalization. February 8th, Budget Presentations. February 9th, Board of Review and Equalization. February 9th, also Budget Presentations. February 10th, Budget Presentations. And February 11th, Board of Review and Equalization.
Second, that, so is there any discussion on any of those minutes? Okay, here none. All those in favor of approving the minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that's done. We'll move to approval of requisitions for February 18th, 2021, and I'll move those in the amount of $13,929. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next is approval of accounts payable for February 11th, 2021. I'll move those also in the amount of $567,733.59.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, approval of accounts payable for February 18th, 2021. And I'll go ahead and move those as well, in the amount of $240,968.68.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next up is approval of manual checks. There are no manual checks for February 12th, so February 19th, 2021. And I'll move February 19th, out of $89,143.68. Any discussion on that? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President? I believe there are manual checks.
For the 12th?
Yeah.
Yeah, I got an email, I think, from Jessica, said there was none. Where are you referring to?
Well, the, it says manual checks at the top for February 12th. The total amount, $314,815.14. I'll move to approve that. Maybe nobody else got that email.
All right, I mean, I'll second that. I'm going to defer to you, Commissioner Tab, that that is accurate. So I did not see that, so.
There it is.
Any discussion on that? All right, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All righty. Next up is approval of payroll for February 4th, 2021. And I'll move that in the amount of $268,849.34. Any discussion on that? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Stephanie, do we have any announcements?
The only announcement that I have is that there is, under the sheriff's agenda item, there's a discussion of past and present promotional structure. That will probably need to be discussed in an executive session. And I've spoken with the sheriff and I am going to text him when we get to the point where we would go into executive session for anything else we need to go into executive session for, and then he'll join us then for that second item. That's the only, that's the only change that I have.
I had a quick question. The magistrate court, second floor renovations, number eight, does that have anything to do with the sheriff?
Well, yes, sort of, because he, the sheriff, had requested to move into that third floor space. And the magistrates believe that they were promised that space as well. So yes, it is sort of a discussion regarding a prior request.
Okay, so with that in mind, we'll, once we get to Agenda Item Number One, we'll then do Number Eight.
Okay.
Sheriff can come back to the executive session at the end of the meeting.
Okay, that works.
So is that all for announcements?
That's all I have for announcements.
Okay. Next is public comment.
Okay. So if there's anyone who would like to, listening, who would like to make public comment, you can either use the raise your hand icon, or you can send me a message, and I will unmute you and let you make public comment. So I'll give you a second to use that. If you just click on the little raise your hand icon, that lets me know that I, that you want to make public comment. It looks like we have one person already. I'm going to go ahead, Ms. Lynn Widmire. I have unmuted you and you're still self, oh, there you go.
Okay. Hi, good evening. My name is Lynn Widmire, 1434 Cattail Run Road, Charlestown. And I want to address Item 11, which is it's labeled Second Amendment Sanctuary County Resolution. And it proposes that Jefferson County be declared a Second Amendment Sanctuary County for the purposes described in the resolution. There is no resolution. There's no background information related to this item. There is nothing for a member of the public to understand why this is being proposed, what it means, and it is especially troubling that it's being proposed for action. So I am very concerned. This is the second time the county commission has an item on the agenda with no supporting documentation for action by the commission. And it is extremely troubling. And I, I would hope that the commission, in its commitment to transparency, which I know Commissioner Tricia Jackson ran on, will do a little better when it comes to requiring commissioners, when they put an item on the agenda, to put on some background information so members of the public can know what's the problem, what's the issue, what's being addressed, what does it mean. And I hope as we go forward, you'll, you'll make a commitment to that type of background for members of the public. Thank you.
All right. I don't have anyone else who has raised their hand or sent me a message.
Okay. All right, well, seeing how there's no one else, we can move on then. So we'll move to Agenda Item Number One. Mr. Tom Hanson, Sheriff, Home Confinement Officer, Discussion Action.
Hold on a second. I see the sheriff in our attendee section. I'm going to move him over and make him a panelist right now. So he, you can see him.
Good evening, Commissioners.
How are you doing, Sheriff?
Doing well. How are you, sir?
Not too bad. So tell us about this confinement officer again.
Well, again, this was, this was back two meetings ago, or a meeting ago, when I brought it up that, and the home confinement assistant is Cassie Johnson in this, and Commissioner Tab brought up that there was some, thought there was a conflict. And I have since reached out to the Ethics Commission, and they have acknowledged that there is no conflict. There is too many levels of supervision between my stepdaughter and myself, to include a corporal, a sergeant, a lieutenant, the chief deputy, and myself. And also, she doesn't fall under the nepotism law, because stepchildren do not fall under nepotism clause of the law either. And lastly, she doesn't live with me, nor do I pay any of her bills. So the judge wanted her to be full-time. You made a comment that maybe we need to look at my, my home confinement money to see if I had enough. I have $60,000 in home confinement right now that can help pay for her full-time position, moving her from 20 hours to the 70-hour full-time position, which is, I believe, what the judge wants.
Okay, so I mean, we don't control that confinement money. Grab Stephanie, so the sheriff, I mean, as long as, here's the issue, though. Is that going to cover the benefits that are rolled into the county portion?
I don't know what the cost of those are. And I was waiting to get some, some numbers from the Finance Committee Office. I don't know what they are, but I believe it could be close. I don't know. Stephanie, do you know what they?
Yes, it should, it should cover her benefits as well. If you have $60,000 in there, it should cover the salary and the, at the salary that you, that you provided.
She's at $13 an hour, 20 hours now, so I don't know what her, what her benefits are going to be, but I believe it should be close to that, yes.
Yeah, it should be fine. And I did check, the Home Confinement Fund is similar in terms of paying employees or control to the assessors' valuation fund. And we pay benefits out of the assessors' valuation fund, too. So this, you should include in your motion that this position will be paid out of the Home Confinement Fund, including salary and benefit.
Okay, so I'll move, we approve the appointment of Cassie Johnson as a full-time home confinement officer, and all salary and benefits will be paid out of the sheriff's home confinement fund.
Second.
Any discussion on it? Commissioner Tab?
I just have a question, I think, to make it official. If it's known, we need the salary and the effective date.
Do you have that, Sheriff?
Well, our salary is $13 an hour, so I think it comes out to $27,000 a year, or some, some close to that. And effective date, I guess, would be this next Monday.
Okay.
Or, or Sunday. We typically do, we typically start things on new pay, new pay weeks. So it would probably, probably be this Sunday.
Okay, so I'll update my motion to reflect the pay at $13 an hour with a start date of February 21st.
Okay.
Any further discussion on that? All right, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you, Sheriff. So we're going to discuss your second item probably at the end of the meeting. But we're going to, we're going to jump, please stay on the line. We're going to jump to Number Eight on the agenda, under Magistrate Court, Second Floor Renovations. Commissioner Tab, that was yours. Do you want to?
Right. Well, you know, I had been told, you know, I didn't go look at anything, but that some items had been moved into this second floor space by, I think it was the tax office. And to my knowledge, and it's in our capital improvement plan, that we were going to renovate, renovate that space to make it for another magistrate court. And if we ever get back to normal operations, I think that magistrate court is desperately needed. So I want to make sure no one's at cross purposes here, thinking the space is available to one when it's been promised to somebody else.
May I ask a question? I'm a little confused. The office that I want to renovate is the first floor office where the tax office sits now. When you walk up the first set of steps, the tax office is there now, and you all approve them moving there. All I want to do is, is move my two home confinement people upstairs to an office that we have control of already. And, and so that the first floor tax area where the tax office is, can be expanded so we can better serve the citizens of Jefferson County.
Well, perhaps I've been misinformed then, but I, is that correct, Stephanie? That there's, there's room to move folks around?
When I looked at the office with Laura, we went upstairs, and it was my understanding that you wanted to move what I would call Judge Yoder's old office and where the prosecutor used to be on the second floor, or on the, yeah, on that, in that space, or on the third floor, sorry. And there was like a bailiff locker in there. I mean, there was a locker, I assumed it belonged to the bailiffs and some other items.
They were in there, but they were moved out because of a bad leak. It happened approximately a year ago. In fact, maintenance just now replaced the carpeting in the other offices that my bailiffs are, the main office that the bailiffs are in right now. The three offices that I want to move the home confinement into is, was being used by them, but again, they were moved out because of the leak. All I want to do is put, move the home confinement people, the two people that are downstairs on the first floor, up to those offices so that the tax office, again, can be expanded to better serve the cities, citizens.
And about that, go ahead.
I'm sorry. You know, I would suggest that, you know, sheriff and the county administrator work out the details and make sure, you know, no one's at cross purposes for space that's been promised to someone else. That's just all I wanted to get clarification on.
I have no problem with that.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so Stephanie, it sounds like you got that under wraps with the sheriff.
Yeah, I do.
All right, thanks. Anything further on that, Commissioner Tab?
No, that's fine.
All right, so we'll move on. Number two on the agenda is Michelle Gordon, Finance Director.
I'm here. Before we get started, I think I have a little, I have a little typo. And my second motion is say, should say, motion to accept State Budget Revision Number Four. I copied it down and didn't change that to a four.
Right.
So State Budget Revision Number Three for the General County Fund is to allocate our, our federal grant money that we received from the CARES Act for fiscal year '21, and to make those departments, well, that actually had any COVID-19-related or pandemic-related expenditures. The majority of the leftover funding per our financial policies would then revert to transfers to our funny, Capital Outlay Fund. Any questions about that? Okay. The next budget revision is State Budget Revision Four, and it's made up of a few different components. The first component would be that on February the 4th, the commission voted to eliminate the project manager position effective February the 4th, 2021. And this is the budget revision to remove those wages from the county commission, wages and benefits from the county commission line item, and increase transfers to the Capital Outlay Fund as the offset. The second component, also on February 4th, 2021, the commission voted to transfer GIS from engineering to IT effective March the 1st, 2021. These are the budget revisions to transfer remaining salaries and operating expenditures from engineering to IT. So that one is completely budget neutral. The third component would be that on December the 3rd, the commission voted to approve in-kind contributions to the Convention's Visitors Bureau for their new welcome center costs. Additionally, they did provide us a check for an overage in fiscal year '21 of $3,695. So this is the budget revision to record $102,000 and about $103,000 in in-kind labor materials that we spent on this project, and to increase other buildings, materials, and supplies by about $3,000 to cover the overages. The fourth component would be to correct the GL account for the airport authority seat on the board. It should be in the Development Authorities line item, which is Department 431 instead of the County Commission line item. And that's a mistake that I made during the budget. The fifth component would be on December the 3rd, 2020, the commission approved to increase, an increase in part-time bailiff wages due to the staffing demands created by COVID-19. So it's increasing the part-time bailiff wages by $27,868 and related benefits for a till of $30,000, and decreasing transfers to the Capital Outlay Fund. Any questions about either one of those budget revisions?
Thanks, Michelle. So I'll move, we accept the four-year, 21-state budget revision, Number Three, for the General County Fund.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. And then I'll move, we accept the four-year, 21-state budget revision, Number Four, for the General County Fund.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
All right. Moving along, is Mr. Allen on? Agenda Item Number Three. Steve Allen, Director, Jefferson County Homeland Security, request to post the vacant Deputy Director Planner Program Manager position. How are you doing, Mr. Allen?
Doing well, considering the weather, COVID, and everything else. But we've been out yesterday and today, always checking the situations on our roads and so forth. But yes, and with, with what's going on right now with COVID, and then adding the weather into it as well, it certainly points out that need to have a Deputy Director in the position. We just received that, not a request, but his, he has resigned the position. So I wanted to jump on that as soon as possible to make sure that we can start the work. It's going to take several months to advertise and fill that position. I know the last time, it took several months to just get somebody into the position. So I wanted to get that work started and have your all's approval to, to get started on the possibility of, of putting someone into that position.
Okay. So I'll make the motion. I move to approve the posting of the position of the JCHSEM Deputy Director Planner Program Manager, which is an exempt position at a grade-five salary.
Second.
Any discussion or questions for Mr. Allen on this?
Well, I just know, you know, that empty spot in his staff is, surely needs to be filled in the midst of a pandemic, so.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, so your next item is consideration of entering into an agreement with the Region Nine Planning and Development Council to be part of the Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan with Berkeley and Morgan Counties.
That's correct. And if memory serves me right, you all wanted to take time to consider what, what it would entail and make your decisions on that. And to bring you up to speed, I know when we met with you before, there was not much movement at the state level regarding that grant application for Region Nine Planning Development Council. Over the last couple of weeks, there's actually been some movement. I, I contacted the director at Region Nine Planning Development and asked, because she asked if there, if anything had taken place over the last couple of weeks. And I said, no, we're really, you know, waiting to hear more from what's going on. Can you give me an update? And she said that just recently, and this is as of yesterday, she received a, an email from one of the representatives at the states saying that they should be hearing, they being Region Nine, should be, should have the award announcements for the Berkeley and Morgan portion of it within the next two to three weeks. And then once those awards are announced, then they can submit the modification to add Jefferson County into that grant application.
Do any Commissioners have any opinions, updates on this? I mean, I saw a few reservations on doing this. I, I think, I mean, it's a good idea. I've looked into it further. I still have some reservations as to just, should we do it at this time? I don't know what anybody else thinks here.
Yeah, I just, I'm of the same mindset. What, you know, our overall commitment, what are we looking at? And is it something we can do? I just don't know that we can right now.
I'm wondering, I think this goes on a cycle. Doing, review a hazard mitigation plan. What is that? Where are we in that cycle? I guess it's time again, but I don't know if it's three or five years. I can't remember how often we do that.
It's every five years. We are due to have it completed and ready to go, to have it approved by the state and the federal government no later than January of 2024. So we have a couple of years. We're in the third year of the acceptance of it. However, within the next year, we'll need to start applying for that, that Hazard Mitigation Plan grant like Region Nine is doing right now. So we do have time. We're, we're not rushed into it. However, to be included with the other two counties, they're going to move forward on it. And this, this, it was an opportunity to, to have all three of our easternmost panhandle counties all under the same plan and so forth. And it's, it's easier, from what I understand, for the Region Nine Planning Development Council to have all three under the same plan. But it, it doesn't necessarily make it any better for us. So, you know, it's, and we can, we can develop our own hazard mitigation plan, just like we've done for the last 10 or maybe 15 years at this point. It's, it should not be a problem. It's just a matter of the opportunity to get in with Region Nine and have it all done by the same company. I have all three of the plans kind of the same Boilermaker Park with differences in our individual counties.
And can you predict if there's any cost savings if we join the other two counties or if we go by ourselves?
The, the costs of the plan are all incorporated under this grant. So we would be paid back no matter if it costs us $10,000, and then we get reimbursed, or $17,000 and we get reimbursed by the federal government. So it's, it's, it's not, it's, it's almost like our, our Emergency Management Performance Grant, where we pay upfront and then get the money back. But, you know, there's, there's no cost to the county. Well, there is a cost upfront, however, we recoup that, that cost from the grant.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's better at this time to have Jefferson County control their own mitigation plan, especially since there doesn't seem to be a cost savings at all. And I'm all about working with other counties for things. As you keep adding to a team, it gets kind of messed up at times. I think we're doing a good job here. I don't want to take that risk at this time, but that's just my opinion.
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with that because, you know, just as I said on legislative issues, when we join with other counties, we sometimes get pushed to the side. So if there's no cost savings, I'm, and we have the time, I think we should wait, at least this year.
Any other Commissioners with comments on this? Who's that? Okay, you're coming in pretty dull, Commissioners Stoffer.
Oh, I said, I agree with you all.
All right. Commissioner Hudson, you have anything?
Nah, it's the same.
Okay, so Mr. Allen, it sounds like we're gonna, we're gonna pass at this point in time. But thanks for looking into everything and providing us the details. Maybe we'll But thanks for looking into everything and providing us the details, maybe we'll reapproach at a later point.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
Thanks a lot. Okay, so we're running a little early, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna jump back to new business number nine. Just impact fee workshop and set date and time. So I have a few comments on this, and feel free to interject any commissioners. I personally do not have the desire to raise the impact fees, especially with this specific consultant's report, which I think is extremely flawed with some of the inputs and assumptions they've used. I don't really think from my standpoint, I'm gonna benefit going back and forth with a consultant when there are numerous assumptions used in the study. I don't think it's gonna benefit me personally to go back and forth with a consultant saying, I think this is wrong, or this is right, and vice versa. How does everybody else feel?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I agree with you. If you looked, if you look at this impact fee report, it is extremely flawed. It doesn't have a lot of data, accurate data in there. And in December, someone asked, you know, in a previous meeting, it's before I took office, where did they get, where did they get their data for the schools? And they said it was a regional, they get it from the region. Well, Jefferson County is paying them. I don't think Winchester, Hagerstown, or Frederick, or Loudoun County is contributing to this report. I've always said, you know, garbage in and garbage out, and that's, that's exactly what this report looks like. Personally, I want to move a motion to ask for our money back because this report is absolutely ridiculous. It was a waste, I think it was Roger, I think it was a little over fifty thousand dollars. And we shouldn't be paying for a report that, that was, that is this flawed. And if you look at his report from five years ago, he claims that we would have a nine hundred and fifty person enrollment in the last five years in our schools, and we actually had a negative one hundred and twenty seven. So these guys certainly are not doing their job, and personally, we shouldn't pay them. Thank you, thank you, Chairman.
I mean, I'll second that motion. Is there any discussion on that?
Well, I'm not ready to go there yet, I'd like to hear Roger's opinion on what he thinks of the report. Or, you know, I think they're already been paid, so it's gonna be hard to take it back from him, but I don't know what options we have.
With all due respect, Commissioner Tab, there is a motion on the floor that has been seconded, so we're gonna have to have a vote regardless.
Well, I understand that, but I'm just asking for more information before we vote from our staff.
That's fine, no, that's fine, I don't have a problem with that, I just want to make sure that we follow the course of action and the vote is taken after discussion.
Right, well, I was just in my discussion, I was saying I wasn't ready to go there yet because I wanted to hear from staff first.
Okay, Roger, do you have any input on this?
Yeah, I'll make some, I wasn't prepared to discuss it tonight, and I was planning on more to discuss it in workshop, but I just want you to know for starters that Michelle and I have gone through that report like two or three times, asked questions, had changes made, added things, clarified things. We believe it's correct, I believe the math is correct. If I had to testify in court as to whether or not I believe the report is accurate, my testimony would be that it is. I may be wrong, but I believe that it is. The, um, they're using census data, and some of the sources, like the source of the data that they're using has even changed since five years ago. Where like the, the government census data, say, broke out certain housing types into a number of specific types. And then at this latest census data they're using, they actually go and maybe combine two or three types together. But that's, that's their source, that's all they have to go with. And so when they're looking for school data, and I, and they could explain it better than me, the only thing available from the federal census is like a regional group of, of data. Now, I just want to say this, and there's always been, even five years ago, a lot of concern about the growth figures and the schools not having the students predicted, et cetera. The growth figures have nothing to do with determining the amount of the impact fee. All the figures are, is data that they can use projecting ten years out of, we think the school system will grow by this much, therefore, we would expect that X number of dollars of impact fees would be generated over that period. If there's less growth, less impact fees, more growth, more impact fees. It's not used to set the amount of the impact fee, the impact fee is based on the assets that they own. So what you get when you, like, what I was gonna propose at the workshop is that you simply accept the study, and then if there, if, like, if you were wanting to hold the fees to the same, then I would figure out what percent you needed to adopt the current amounts at to stay the same. Because what happens in the level of service calculations and so forth is that you might have where all the school buildings are fifty percent of the school's assets in two thousand and fifteen, but over the last five years, that has changed, and school buildings are now sixty percent of their assets. So if you accept the new report, you're accepting those new capital category allocations, and that resets what percent of the money would go to which capital categories. If you stay with the same report, you're locking it in at the same percent. And so if you, if you accept the new report, you're resetting the allocations to where the money goes to try to maintain the same level of service, which is what impact fees do. They, they're, they're, they're what a person needs to pay in order to pay their fair share of matching what the current level of service is. And that's, when I said the last time, I could show you simply how to get there, that's what I was gonna do, is say, just accept the report, and we'll figure out what percent those need to be set at to keep the fees at the same amount, if that's what you want. And then, to me, everything's clean and done. The county commission in two thousand and fifteen struggled with this whole thing for a year and a half, and they finally ended up where they said, we're gonna adopt the fees at seventy percent of what was calculated. So there is a precedent for it.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Tab.
I just want to ask Roger, when you're talking about the new study would reset the allocations, would this in any way benefit Parks and Rec where right now, most of their allocation is for land? And I believe, don't want to speak for Parks and Rec, but I think they feel like they have enough land, they need the improvements on the land now.
I would have to go back and look at the numbers and see how, how their capital categories work out compared to two thousand and fifteen study. I don't have an answer for that tonight.
Right, right, well, I don't expect you to have it all computerized in your head, so, but I'm thankful you for that explanation. I think that that's helpful for me.
But I want you to understand, I work for you, so I'll do whatever you want to do.
I don't think anybody.
Commissioner Compton, can I?
Go ahead, Nathan.
Oh, thank you, I just wanted to ask Roger, Roger, I know that the, the study and that sort of thing has to be updated periodically. Will a delay in this run us afoul of the timelines for the update?
No, it's just typically been done on a five year cycle to just get a periodic reset of the levels of service and so forth. There's no deadline to meet, and we last talked about doing it at the end of March, you know, and, you know, I was looking, I don't know if you do it on a county commission day, but the eighteenth, or the twenty fourth, twenty fifth, or even out to, you know, the thirty first, or April first, something like that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that if there was any issue related to the deadlines, that the commissioners were aware of it. Thanks.
No deadlines.
All right, so just a quick thing too, I don't want to waste the commission's time here. So I'm trying to get a feel for how people feel about the impact fees in general. I mean, we're talking to Superintendent Gibson later on this evening. But, I mean, the impact fees call for a substantial increase here, which is as a result of the consultant's report. So if the majority of the commission is not interested in raising impact fees to that consultant's report, or even above levels they currently are today, how beneficial is that workshop gonna be? Are we just gonna be arguing over assumptions the entire time?
I, I don't think that's the purpose of the public, the workshop, and don't we have to have more? Have we had a public hearing on the, yes, we have, on impact fee? But I, I think it would be beneficial and educational to everybody to at least compare this one, not the final numbers, but the allocations, and what has changed over time. I don't think it's, you know, we don't have, we can get the budget done first. I mean, it's not something we have to turn around in a day or two. And I think we owe it to the public to know what our fee is based on, how it has changed, why it has changed.
Well, Commissioner Tab, in two thousand and fifteen, which I think you were on the commission at that time, I mean, essentially, you all threw that study into the trash and just came up with some arbitrary number and went with it. I mean, and so, I'm just asking, is that gonna be the plan of the majority of this commission? Because I don't want to waste Dalton's time and the commission's time.
We did not throw it in the trash, we did not throw it in the trash, we set it at a percentage, which we can do this time if we desire. So I think you need to review your history.
The reason why we have zero dollars for commercial impact fees was because the commission at that point in time decided to do that against the consultant's suggestions. So, so we've lost a substantial amount of money because of that decision in two thousand and fifteen. I just want to make sure that, is that what's gonna occur now, or are we gonna have a serious conversation, or just argue over assumptions?
We did that as we were in the midst of a recession, and, you know, I'm not gonna argue anymore with you.
I'm just pointing out the facts here, so.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, again, I don't see any point in bringing this consultant back just to waste our time. I mean, if we're just gonna come up with a number, there's no sense in wasting our time bringing him back because his, his report is, is, is very flawed. He didn't take the time to, to do a lot of research, that I could tell on several of the numbers. Eighty-five percent of the impact fees go to the school, the schools, and they are extremely flawed. So I don't know, I mean, what do you think?
I mean, there is a motion on the table right now, it's been seconded, so we can continue discussion or to vote on that motion. The motion is to send a letter to the consultant requesting a refund for the services of the impact fee recalculation study. Is there any further discussion on that specific motion?
Yeah, Josh, I just want, I think the motion should be tabled because this does open the county up to some liability, like if we ask for our money back and stuff, and I think Nathan should have some time to review our options on that.
How's everybody else feeling on that? I mean, we, we can table it if you, if you want, I mean, I don't know if Nathan's still on, if he foresees any liability of sending a letter requesting a refund. It's not like we're gonna, it's.
They might object to that, I don't know. But I, I, I think that it would, it would be wise to put it off just to, to review that issue, and also for the commission to have a chance to collectively think about, about the, the effect of projecting the study. I mean, I don't think that you can just, and I hesitate to discuss this definitively in open session, but I think that there, there has to be a basis for the impact fees. And that basis is typically, part of the basis is, is a study. Now, whether it's this study, or another study, or something else.
That's, I mean, Commissioner Stoffer.
You can't just.
Mr. Stoffer?
Yes, I'll table them so Nathan has time to review it, there's some impacts.
And one last comment, I mean, I'm not just gonna accept this, I mean, I'm a consultant in the electric utility field. I'm not gonna just accept a study if I think there's flawed data. I understand where you're coming from, Roger, and you didn't do the study yourself, so I just, I mean, this is a firm from Bethesda, Maryland. I mean, I'm from down there, I mean, would they give that same study to a Montgomery County Council? I mean, I don't know, I mean, some of the numbers just jump out, so it's just unrealistic, even using census numbers. I mean, as a consultant, you can adjust numbers, and as long as you verify and account for those adjustments. This thing was just, I mean, I don't know if it did it with a six pack of beer or what, but it's just, it's not gonna work for me, so we'll table that, and I don't, if anybody has desire to, go ahead.
It would help me if you had specifics of what it is that you're saying you believe is inaccurate, so I can research it and discuss it with the consultant.
Let us talk to Superintendent Gibson, I think some of the numbers and the enrollments, I understand that those aren't factoring into the numbers specifically, but those do tie into the overwhelming study. So to accept the study with some of those numbers is a problem for me. So it's tabled then, and we'll reapproach this at a later point. Is there anything else from anybody on this? All right, so we'll move on, thank you, Roger.
Sure.
Okay, so it's not quite seven yet. Can we move to number ten? That public hearing regarding administrative appeal of impact fee coordinator decision that the conversion of the fifty-one unit quality Inn Hotel near Shepherdstown into twenty-one bedroom efficiency apartments with first floor retail requires full payment of impact fees. So, is that you two?
You can go ahead and do it, unless you want me to do it.
Did you get my email I sent today?
I did, yes.
I can do it. The Impact Fee Procedures Ordinance, Section Four on Appeals outlines the process, and it's a little more formal than what you might think. So it, initially, it says that they, they need to make the request on Form three hundred impact fee appeal. They didn't, but staff, it's just a technicality, we're moving forward with the appeal. It says that the county commission may appoint a hearing officer to hear the appeal, in which case the hearing officer shall have the authority to conduct hearings as required by this ordinance. The hearing officer shall take sworn testimony, receive evidence and exhibits, rule on evidentiary objections, cause the testimony to be taken by stenographic reporter or electronic recording device and make proposed findings a fact, which the county commission may adopt, or the county commission may substitute its own findings of fact in support of its decision. I noted that the county commission will need to decide who will conduct the hearing and take the sworn testimony. With regard to recording the testimony, staff expects that the county commission's recording of the meeting or hearing will satisfy this requirement. Staff requests that the appeals hearing not be scheduled before Thursday, March fourth, so that we can prepare our presentation on how we arrived at our decision. Also, Wednesday morning, March tenth, Friday, March twelfth, or other dates that work for us. And I prefer to make the presentation in person if possible. So, and then it goes on to say that the county commission shall render a decision within ninety days after filing of the appeal.
Okay, so I'm trying to find a motion in their documents, going through this.
They actually wanted, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I didn't put this on the agenda, they had filed the appeal with the county clerk, and it went to the county commission, then came back to us. So I found out about it after it was already on the agenda.
Yeah, so we put it on the agenda to set the hearing, they actually wanted to have the hearing tonight, and I knew that that wouldn't be enough time for Roger and Nathan to prepare for the appeal. So we put it on the agenda, and I did, I did speak with them, letting them know we weren't gonna be having the hearing tonight, that we were going to, that we were going to set a hearing this evening for a future date. So if, Roger, if you want to do it in person, the second meeting in March is, is always virtual. So we could do it the first meeting in March. If that would give you enough time to do it, and Nathan's here too, so I know he's gonna have a role to play as well.
Well, it was, it is not a bad idea to have a hearing officer appointed and have them hear this and make recommendations. That's similar to what we do with the, with a lot of estate cases. And it's just because that gives them the opportunity to have more time to present evidence, to present, you know, documents, to have someone consider it. evidence, to present, you know, documents, if, to have someone consider it. It's just, since it's in the nature of a hearing, it's just more, is this more conducive to a hearing? A hearing officer is better suited to do that than the, the county commission, generally, I think, just because of all the other things that you all have to do. That's just my thought.
Do we have to have a hearing officer, Nathan? I thought we could do it ourselves.
No, you could do it yourself.
Okay.
You could certainly do it yourself. It, it's just, you know, it's, it's a, it's a time-consuming issue if you have to receive a bunch of documents, review them. If it's like a, a court hearing, you know, it takes time. And a hearing officer can do all that and bring you back a recommendation based on the evidence that was presented to him or her.
So Nathan, this basically comes down to the fact that they should be paying these impact fees for the conversion, but they don't think they should?
I think so, yeah.
Lame in terms, the, the public is aware of what that is?
Yes.
I mean, who, what commissioners are interested in appointing a hearing officer for this? It doesn't sound like Commissioner.
I mean, I, I'm, I'm not going to fight you on it. You all certainly can do it yourself if you want. I'm just saying, a lot of times it's, it's an issue of how much time and detail that it, that it takes to do a hearing.
I'm fine with a hearing officer. I don't know who, how someone would be selected. We, you know, we do this a lot on estates that are in dispute and so forth, and it does clarify the issues once it is presented to the commission. But, you know, the commission has a final say, hearing officer or not, so.
That's right.
Commissioner Jackson?
I'm, I'm fine with a hearing officer if that's what everybody else wants to do or the commission, either way. I, I'm back to your, your point, so they should be paying, but they don't want to. It's a purpose of the hearing.
I mean, based on that assumption, I mean, I personally don't feel we need a hearing officer. That's just my prerogative. Commissioner Hudson?
I could really go either way, but I think it'd be benefit to us for a hearing officer because they'll get into the weeds a little bit more and actually know the right questions to ask instead of us five, so.
Okay, so it sounds like three are in favor and two are not. So I guess, how are we going about appointing a hearing officer, Nathan? Can it be any individual or, I mean?
Typically, you, you appoint an attorney who is somewhat familiar with the field, you know, like land use kind of things, or.
How much is, this is going to cost taxpayers to appoint an attorney to look over this? I mean, do we have any idea of what, what this could potentially cost? I mean.
I mean, I, I don't. It just depends on how long that it takes. And that, you know, that's a consideration. And certainly, you can, you know, you can do it yourself, like I said, but it just, it's, 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 sometimes it, it can be an involved thing. I don't know how involved this will be, how much that the, the complainants will introduce evidence and that kind of thing.
Okay, so I just, I, I've changed my vote to, you know, hearing officer.
Roger, did you? I'm, I'm sorry, well.
Yeah, I would try to do this as simple as possible when we do it. And I'm just going to go over what the ordinance says and how we arrived at what they, they've got to do. Michelle and I have been pulling out of the information they submitted, and I don't mean this disrespectfully, but the different avenues they're trying to go, because they're going down multiple avenues, I believe, to make their case to avoid paying impact fees. And we're lining those all up with the sections of the ordinance that they're using and explain why we don't believe that they're entitled to it under those sections. I, I'm going to keep it simple, and then they would just respond, and they've already submitted their whole argument written by an attorney is in the packet they submitted. So I, I mean, I don't think this thing would be maybe an hour.
All right, well, that, I, you know, accept your, your estimate, although in lawyer time, an hour, that's maybe three hours. But, but that's okay, it's not prohibitive.
I, I will.
My part should be over within 20 minutes.
I will say that when they submitted their agenda request, they only requested a half an hour to present their case, the, the developer.
So I guess, I mean, is there a timeframe where we need to schedule this thing? I mean, does it have to be two weeks, 90 days, 30 days?
90 days.
It has to be 90 days, and they submitted it on the, oh, the end of January. So, I mean, you've got some time to do it, but you have to render a decision within 90 days.
Yeah, so.
Wow, okay.
We're in the budget pretty good right now and a lot of other things going on. I mean, staff is already busy enough with other going on. If it's 90 days, I mean, I'd like to push this out a little bit longer to give folks some time to look over stuff. Roger, I mean, how's everybody else feel on this? I'm not saying push it out 60 more days, I'm just saying maybe, maybe 30 more days.
Well.
March 18th, that's a night meeting. We'd have to go to, like, April 1st would be, you know, a daytime meeting.
I'm fine with that if everybody else is. And we, I know, Jane, I knew the question you were going to ask in two seconds.
Okay, well, let's see if you're a mind reader. My question is, we have to have a decision in 90 days, and it was submitted the end of January. So that would make it the end of March approximately, right?
No, it was submitted, I'm sorry, it was submitted on February 9th.
Well, that gives us another week after, we have to have budget done by the end of March, basically, or hopefully sooner, but, and we have to have a decision done, not just have the hearing by then?
You have to make a decision within 90 days.
Okay.
Which is May 9th.
Let's do April 1st meeting, if that's okay with everybody.
Right.
Are you, Roger?
I'm good with it.
All right, so the second thing, so I, I want to do a, a roll call here as far as the appointment of the representative. Commissioner Stoffler, yes or no?
I want to do it ourselves.
Commissioner Tab?
So you're talking about a hearing officer?
Yes.
Okay, now, I'm, I'm fine with us doing it ourselves with Roger testifying and explaining things.
And Commissioner Jackson?
No hearing officer.
Hudson?
I'm fine with us doing it.
All right, and I'm in agreement with everybody else, so it doesn't look like there will be a hearing officer now.
True, and I just raised that because of knowing that everyone, you know, we were in the tax throes of the tax and budget season and all that kind of thing. But it's fine, we, we can certainly do it.
All right, sounds good. Thanks, Nathan. So I know the public hearing will start in a few minutes. I'll let Stephanie get out of here. Sorry, Stephanie, we ran over a little bit. Everybody just take a two or three minute break.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yeah.
So there's no one here to make public comment as I talk?
Okay. Is everybody back? All right, there he is. Caleb, are you on?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, so Stephanie, you ready to go? Stephanie? Are we good, Stephanie?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, so it's 7:05, this is a public hearing. Agenda item number four, zoning map amendment, rezoning request for property designated as tax district Harpers Ferry, O4, tax map nine, parcels 23 and 27. The properties are located off Shipley, Shipley School Road in Harpers Ferry, West Virginia.
And we have Mr. Secretus also and Mr. Householder who are both here for the, for this agenda.
So I guess, is there anything you gentlemen want to convey prior to opening the hearing?
Commissioner Thompson, we're looking for the hospice hearing, so we have nothing to, to offer on the zoning.
Okay, I just want to make sure. So Stephanie, do we have any public comment on the zoning hearing?
I don't see anyone who will have raised their hand to comment on this.
Okay, so we'll, I guess we leave it open for two weeks then, right?
Yes, we usually do leave it open for two weeks.
Okay, so if anybody in the public has comment on agenda item four, A, zoning map amendment, please send your comments in. The comment period will be for two more weeks, and it will close March 4th. Okay, so we'll move to the next public hearing, which is B, pursuant to section 147 F of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended the code relating to the proposed issuance of Berkeley County and Jefferson County, West Virginia, as joint issuers, commercial development refunding revenue bonds, hospice of Panhandle Incorporated Project Series 2021 in the amount not to exceed $5,500,000, the bonds to refund issuers, commercial development revenue bonds, hospice of the Panhandle Incorporated Project Series 2012, the prior bonds for the benefit of hospice of the Panhandle Incorporated, a West Virginia nonprofit corporation. So that was pretty long. You gentlemen have any comments prior to opening the public hearing?
Just like to say.
Oh, you go ahead, Josh.
Yeah, good evening, commissioners. This is Josh Householder here. It's good to see you all, I appreciate you all being here, and Stephanie for being able to hold this public hearing. I serve as chief banking officer for CNB Bank, that will be the purchaser of these bonds, and, and a dual role this evening, as I'm also a board member of hospice of the Panhandle. So our, our bank won a competitive bid process to actually go through the process for financing and, and complete this refunding. We have worked with, you know, quasi-governmental agencies, municipalities, local school boards, boards of education on projects like this, and we're really happy to have the opportunity to also work with hospice of the Panhandle that does such a phenomenal job serving clients throughout the Eastern Panhandle, delivering compassionate care, not just for those in their final weeks of life, but really maximizing their life in the last six months. So again, appreciate everybody being here and supporting this. And Cam is Cam Sigrist from Bowles Rice as bond counsel, and we'll go next.
Thank you, Josh. Commissioners, good evening. I am Cam Sigrist of Bowles Rice, and we're serving as bond counsel for this refunding. The county commission, along with the county council of Berkeley County issued bonds in 2012, financed two new buildings for hospice of the Panhandle, Inc. Both the county council of Berkeley County and the county commission of Jefferson County were involved because of actually stratos the county line. That's the reason we have joint issuers here. You're being asked, right, to conduct the public hearing required by the Internal Revenue Code to allow the public to comment on the proposed refunding. The facility is being refinanced by that, and following the public hearing, we're going to ask you to adopt a bond resolution to authorize the issuance of the refunding bond. So first things first, the public hearing hasn't properly noticed in your, your local newspaper at least seven days in advance. It's also been posted on the website, I'm told by, by Stephanie. So at this point, if there are any questions, President Thompson, if you would like to open the floor for public comment, if appropriate to do so at this time.
Yes, and I'll, I'll do that right now pending any questions from commissioners. But this is a public hearing, so I'll open it for public comment. Stephanie, are there any public comments in person?
There's no one in person. Only people I see milling around are sidewalk outside. And then if there's anyone online who would like to make a comment on this issue, you can raise your hand or send me a chat, and I would like to.
Okay. So it doesn't sound like there is any.
It looks like we have Margaret Coswell. We do have someone.
Okay.
Yes, Coswell, did you want to make public comment on the bond?
Yes, this is Margaret Coswell. I'm the CEO at Hospice of the Panhandle, and I just wanted to thank the commission and the staff for your work in bringing this forward, both initially in 2012 and now the refunding of that. I wanted to tell you that since we took our first patient at the inpatient facility on March 31 of 2014, we have served over 2,000 patients in that facility. And in that same period of time, we served a total of 7,000 patients in the four counties of the Eastern Panhandle. So we are grateful for your support and for the help in getting these bonds approved to help lower our mortgage here a little bit during this time. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, this is a, you definitely want to take advantage of those rates. Any further public comments, Stephanie?
No one else has raised their hand. I haven't received any chats indicating that anybody wants to make comments. No.
To confirm, Stephanie, you did not receive any written comments or emails?
No, sir, I did not.
Thank you.
So the motion, we're not going to leave this one open.
No, you wouldn't leave this one.
I'm trying to find.
If you can close the public hearing, I think you can do that in your role as candidate commission president, then the next action item will be the bond authorizing resolution.
Okay, yeah, and so seeing how there's no further public comment on this issue, I'm going to move, we close public comment at this time. The bond resolution, I'm trying to find, all I see here is the public hearing item. I don't see the bond resolution in the agenda packet.
Right, well.
What's that?
It was amended. We amended it on Tuesday to add the resolution. So it's on the amended agenda. Under the public hearing.
Right, at the end of the agenda item number four D, there is an additional action item consideration of and final action on bond resolution authorizing the issuance of the above referenced bonds and refunding of the prior bonds and approving the issuance of the bonds as the applicable elected representative pursuant to section 147 F of the code. Stephanie was able to make that change on Tuesday, so pursuant to the Governmental Proceedings Act, two businesses in the day, so to me, that was lawful.
I, yeah, I must not have that update on mind. Does any commissioner have the will to read that in front of them, or are they looking at the same one I have?
Looking at the same one.
Josh, if you look, there's going to be a highlighted portion.
Yeah, I'm.
On agenda item number four.
Yeah, I, yeah, for some reason, I'm not seeing that.
Okay, I have the printed out copy of just the regular agenda, not the packet of the agenda. And it's, I mean, we did add it. It's the way she added it, she added it right after.
Yeah, I see that. I see it, but I'm trying to find the actual like motion. I see the notice of public hearing. I don't see the motion after it there.
Stephanie, can you read the motion for us?
Yes, I will do that. Move to approve final action on bond resolution authorizing the issuance of the above referenced bonds, the refunding of the prior bonds, and approving the issuance of the bond as the applicable elected representative pursuant to section 147 F of the code.
All right.
I move what Stephanie, I say move what Stephanie, just went over. Thank you.
And I'll second that motion. Any discussion on that? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, guys. We had some clerical issues here, but we got it done.
I apologize for that.
Thank you all very much for your support. We appreciate it.
Definitely.
I want to thank Stephanie also for all of her efforts in getting this done. She was extremely helpful, and I very much appreciate that.
Well done, Stephanie. Thank you.
Well, I was glad we could do this. My mother and my mother-in-law both spent time at hospice for their end-of-life term, and it is an awesome facility, and I know they do great work. So.
Thank you, Commissioner Ted. We appreciate that.
Take care, guys.
I'm going to run back across the street, but if you don't need me, you can do whatever business you need. I'll just take me about maybe five minutes to get back there.
All right, so we're done with that. We're a little early. Commissioner Jackson, you want to move to your agenda item number 11?
Sure.
Okay, so that's Second Amendment Sanctuary County Resolution?
Yeah. So I'm just going to read through the resolution. The purpose of submitting this is just to garner the support of the county commission in support of and recognition of the United States of America Constitution and the West Virginia Constitution to consider Second Amendment Sanctuary County status for the county. So the resolution of the County Commission of Jefferson County, West Virginia, whereas the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution reads, "All well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep in their arms shall not be infringed." And whereas the United States Supreme Court in District of Columbia versus Heller affirm an individual's right to possess firearms unconnected with service in a militia and the right to use the firearms for traditionally lawful purposes such as self-defense within the home. And whereas section one of the Fourteenth Amendment of the United States Constitution reads, "No state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of the citizens of the United States, nor shall any state deprive any person the life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor deny to any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the law." And whereas the United States Supreme Court in McDonald versus Chicago affirmed that the right of an individual to keep in their arms as protected under the Second Amendment is incorporated by the due process clause of the Fourteenth Amendment against the states. And whereas the United States Supreme Court in the United States versus Miller opine that firms are, sorry, opine that firearms are part of ordinary military equipment or with use could contribute to the common defense are protected by the Second Amendment. And whereas Article III, Section II of the Constitution of West Virginia provides a person has the right to keep in their arms for the defense of self, family, home, and state, and for lawful hunting and recreational use. And whereas Article III, Section I of the Constitution of West Virginia reads, "All men are by nature equally free and independent and have certain inherent rights, of which when they enter into a state of society, they cannot by any compact deprive or divest their posterity, namely the enjoyment of life and liberty with the means of acquiring and possessing property and of pursuing and obtaining happiness and safety." And whereas Article III, Section II of the Constitution of West Virginia reads, "All power is invested in and consequently derived from the people. Magistrates are their trustees and servants, and at all times amendable to them." And whereas Justice Thomas M. Cooley in People versus Probit in Michigan surmises, "The states may mold local institutions according to its view of policy or expediency, but local government is a matter of absolute right, and the state cannot take it away." And whereas the right to be free from commandeering hand of government has been recognized by the United States Supreme Court in Prince versus United States, the court held the federal government may neither issue directives requiring the states to address particular problems, nor command the state's officers or those of their political subdivisions to administer or enforce a federal regulatory program. The anti-commandeering principles recognized by the United States Supreme Court in Prince versus United States are predicated upon the advice of James Madison, who in Federalist Number 46 advised a refusal to cooperate with officers of the Union in response to either unconstitutional federal measures or constitutional but unpopular federal measures. And whereas the right to keep in their arms is a fundamental individual right that shall not be infringed in all local, state, and federal acts, laws, orders, rules, or regulations regarding firearms, firearm accessories, and ammunition are a violation of the Second Amendment. And whereas local government has the legal authority to refuse to cooperate with state and federal firearm laws that violate those rights and proclaim a Second Amendment sanctuary for law-abiding citizens in their cities and counties. And whereas the County Commission of Jefferson County, West Virginia recognizes that every person elected or appointed to any office before proceeding to exercise authority or discharge their duties thereof shall make an oath or affirm that they will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of West Virginia. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the County Commission of Jefferson County, West Virginia, that the County Commission hereby declares Jefferson County, West Virginia, a Second Amendment Sanctuary County for the purposes described above. And be it further resolved that the County Commission of Jefferson County, West Virginia hereby expresses its intent to uphold the Second Amendment rights of the citizens of Jefferson County, West Virginia. And be it further resolved that the County Commission of Jefferson County, West Virginia hereby expresses its desire that public funds are not used to unconstitutionally restrict Second Amendment rights of the citizens of Jefferson County, West Virginia, or to aid federal or state agencies in unconstitutional restrictions of said rights. And be it further resolved that the County Commission of Jefferson County, West Virginia hereby declares its intent to oppose, within the limits imposed by law upon local governments, any unconstitutional infringement of the right of law-abiding citizens to keep in their arms, using such reasonable and legal means as the County Commission of Jefferson County, West Virginia, by hereafter approves. And be it further resolved that Jefferson County, West Virginia is hereby declared a Second Amendment Sanctuary County. The County Commission of West Virginia will preserve, protect, and defend the United States Constitution and the Constitution of West Virginia with the adoption of this foregoing resolution. So it just finishes up with the motion to adopt this resolution to uphold the United States Constitution and the Constitution of West Virginia and declaring Jefferson County a Second Amendment Sanctuary County.
So is that a motion, Commissioner Jackson?
I can read the actual motion I submitted, but yes, that is basically, the motion would be the County Commission of Jefferson County, West Virginia, in recognition and support of the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of West Virginia, hereby declares Jefferson County, West Virginia, a Second Amendment Sanctuary County for the purposes described in this resolution.
Second.
All right, any discussion on this? So a few discussion points on this. So frequently elected bodies will pass resolutions to take stances on behalf of those that have elected them. So that's essentially what these resolutions are. It's no different than us passing a resolution for a number of other things which this commission and others do periodically. So this specific one is to just take a stand that this elected body of the Jefferson County Commission supports the Second Amendment. It could be the First Amendment and so forth. So just so the public is aware of what I think this is that Commissioner Jackson has presented. Is there any further discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Commit, your view to Commissioner Tab, I'm not sure what you voted on.
I abstain.
Commissioner Hudson?
I said aye.
Okay, so we have four ayes and one abstention. So motion passes, four and one abstention. We'll move on. Can you, how long do you need for legislative updates, Stephanie?
Not too long. I just have a few things right now. Do you want me to go ahead and do it?
Yeah, that's fine. We're in good shape for time, but I mean, I know one thing passed out of committee. That was Airbnb, wasn't it?
It did, yes. It did pass out of committee today and on to the Senate floor. And I think Ms. Gavin from the CBB was down there in case they needed her testimony. There are a few items. There's a Health Department bill, and I'm sorry, I don't have the numbers with me. I've been running around, and I didn't. But I will get you a spreadsheet with all the numbers on them. There's a Health Department bill that the CCAWV has been following. That bill would require the county commission to approve all of the rules and policies that the Health Department enact. So right now, the Health Department has its own rules for a number of things, for septic systems. The smoking ban is through the Health Department. If this bill passes, it will require all of those to have the approval of the county commission. And for us, it would just be the county commission. If there are joint health departments, it would have to be approved by all of the governing bodies, whether it's a county commission or a municipality. So there are some health departments in the state that that would impact. But right now, that would not impact us. It would just need to be approved by us. A lot of the counties oppose that bill. I think the CCAWV voted to oppose that bill. Mostly, I think, because county commissions don't want to have another layer of authority on those items. There is, and this, when this was on last year, it would be, and it requires an amendment by the voters if it does pass, but there's a joint resolution. I think it's HJR 3, and that is it would give the legislature the authority to eliminate the property tax or exempt certain classes of property. We opposed this last year, and the reason we did is because the way, the plan that goes along with that bill would reduce the amount of property tax that we receive. There was a plan last year that the state would implement, would supplant some funding to counties who lose funding, though it wasn't clear how that money would be allocated amongst the counties. And it would require us, it would give us the authority to raise our levy rate. However, my understanding is that we would, we would raise our levy rate to provide not, to the same level of service that we're doing, that we're providing right now. So that we're collecting the same amount of money that we're collecting now, we would have to raise the levy rate under the new, if the new classes of property were exempt. So there is usually an accompanying bill that outlines how they're going to change the structure if it, if it does pass. I haven't seen that bill, but it's the exact same resolution. And again, it would require a statewide election, and it would have to be, because it is an amendment to the state constitution in order to allow the legislature to do that. So the counties oppose it, or most of the counties oppose it, because it results in less funding to the counties, or it has a mechanism to make up funding, but the mechanism is increased taxes for the same level of service. So that is a, that's a big one that we're following right now. And also, as you know, and I think our legislators talked about this, the state is discussing eliminating the income tax. as you know, and I think our legislators talked about this, the state is discussing eliminating the income tax. But that's also going to leave, it, it could leave a hole in the budget. So I'm not sure how those two interplay and if they would be able to even provide funding for counties who are, who would lose funding through the property tax. Um. So those are the major things that I'm looking at right now. There are other bills that I will discuss later, but I don't think I need to discuss them. The Airbnb looks like it's on track to pass the Senate. Um, I think in the House it may have more issues than it will on the Senate side. Um, and if there's anything, if you, there are any letters or you want me to reach out to any of our legislators on anything that I've talked about, uh, just let me know. Um, and we can discuss these as the legislative session continues. Um, but those are my, those are the ones that are really in, that will really impact counties right now. There is also a bill, uh, forgot about this one. And this one is a, is a good one for the county. It's a regional jail bill. And it would require the municipalities to cover the cost of inmates that they arrest. So right now we pay the entire county bill. So if a municipal police department arrests someone and they're in the regional jail, we cover the cost of that. And this bill would require municipalities to cover that cost. So that would, um, provide a further reduction in our jail bill if that bill passes.
I bet you municipalities don't like that bill.
I'm sure they do not. Um, but they do. They collect their own property taxes and they do get, uh, gaming money as well. After the first million, they lobbied to have that changed. So they do get a fair amount of gambling revenue. Um, in addition to the property taxes that they collect. And the county provides a lot of services in the municipal boundaries, but I imagine they will be, um, opposing that bill.
Yeah. Any further legislative updates from anybody or Stephanie has that it?
That's, that's all I have right now.
All right. So we'll, we'll come back to you for the second one.
That's fine.
All right. So we're pretty much on time. Is, uh, is Ms. Myers on?
She is.
So the, how you doing, Ms. Myers? This is agenda item number five. Uh, to Jefferson County Parks and Rec, Jennifer Myers, to provide updates on Parks and Rec, including future projects and acquisitions. So thi- this is a good thing. It's a kind of exciting thing. So tell us about it, Jennifer.
Yes. So, um, at our board meeting last night, um, we made a project public that we have been working on for close to a year now. Um, and we're very excited to kind of share that with the commission this evening. Um, I sent, I was, I did send a map out earlier. I'm not sure if you guys have seen that, um, or got the information. But, um, we were approached about a year ago from the, um, by the Chesapeake Conservancy that there was a piece of property along the Shenandoah River that bordered Molton Park. And the, um, owner was looking to conserve that property, um, and wanted it to be available for, for the public. Um, so we, we sat through quite a few meetings and it was determined that Parks and Rec was the best fit, um, for, for this potential piece of property. So, um, we have, my board has, um, voted to kind of move forward with the plan. Um, and we are looking to acquire, um, approximately an eighty-six acre parcel, um, that will um, border Molton Park. Um, this map's a little, a little harder to see, but Molton Park, um, you can see down where the boat ramp is, is along the corner. This piece of property would continue along the river frontage and then also encompasses the property across the street. Um, and right now it's mainly used for agricultural. Um, and we would be looking to expand, uh, boating opportunities along the Shenandoah River. There's currently a boat, um, a dock there now that people can actually go out and, well, people would be able to go out and fish on um, once we would take ownership. Um, we're also looking at developing additional camping areas, um, possibly cabins, um, a trail system along the river. Um, you know, nature playgrounds, um, a very um, open and, um, you know, kind of fun area for people just to get out and walk and be in nature. Um, there'd be some, some grasslands and, um, we would also be looking to refore some of the areas that are, that are currently being farmed. Um, so it's, this, this property fits right within our master plan that we adopted, um, a few years ago, and it's a pretty, um, I think a pretty exciting thing for Jefferson County and for Parks and Rec to be able to take, um, to take ownership of this. Um, so we are currently working with West Virginia Land Trust and, um, the Chesapeake Conservancy to apply for grants. Um, the landowner is willing to make a sizable donation, um, and we would look, we are looking currently for grant funding, um, and we'll be using some impact fee funding, um, to kind of put all of those, those sources into play to be able to purchase this for the county. Um, so as part of that, it was part of the grants that we're applying for. We, um, made public this afternoon an environmental assessment that we are asking for public comment on and public feedback. Um, as, you know, for the purchase of this property and what the, you know, the community would like to see. And all of that information's available. I'm happy to, to email that to you if you'd like. Um, it's also available on our, on our, um, social media and our, um, uh, website.
Right on. I saw it Jennifer. I actually shared it on my Facebook page too, so.
Thank you.
But, uh, yeah, this is a good thing. It sounds like, I mean, Commissioner Tab?
No, I, I would like to see the environmental assessment. Um, and that does sound, uh, pretty exciting and something that a lot of people, uh, really flocked to this summer during the COVID was that the, uh, the riverside and so forth. Um, and speaking of grants, um, I got announcements about AmeriCorps again. So you, you shoot me an email and I'll send the AmeriCorps information to you if that can be of use.
Okay. I know we've, um, I think we've requested ten, ten, um, vistas this year.
Okay.
Uh, we're, we're in the process anyway. I don't know that we've officially applied for it, but yeah, that would be great. I'll get that updated information from you.
Yeah.
Um, and we have reached out, you know, as many of you know, Molton Park, um, it, it by far is probably the busiest park that we have, um, especially in the summer months. And there is a major issues with parking, um, and trying to, I know we, we call the Sheriff's Department frequently to help us with that, that situation. So I have reached out to the Sheriff's Department. Um, and have kind of let them know of the, this, you know, potential property that we would be, um, acquiring. And we've also reached out to DNR, um, and they were very excited about the possibility of expanding, um, public access along the Shenandoah. Um, and I think you're willing to partner, you know, once, once we take ownership of this property, if all the grants come through and everything works out. Um, and every, the comment with everyone was if we can make parking across the road, that would be a fantastic thing. So that's really what we're going to work, um, look out and kind of see what options we have. Um, we were setting up a meeting with, um, I think with Mason in the Planning Department and, um, Jenny Bronkman, um, was kind of brought up to speed with it. So, you know, we're hoping that we can come up with some, you know, I guess better alternatives to parking along the road. Um, but it's, it's a beautiful, we, we've had the opportunity to walk it. It's a beautiful, beautiful piece of property. The views from the, um, from the fields on top are just incredible across the river. So, um, I think it'll be a very exciting property. So, so join the park system.
Much better than having houses built on that property.
Yes. And with, and with this, there will be a conservation easement on the property that will be, um, be held by West Virginia Land Trust. So, um, and there's money being set aside from the, um, from the owners that that property will, you know, basically stay in that for perpetuity. Um, it'll always be, um, be conserved.
I just have a, a question just because, um, do some of this stuff with farmland, uh, is, is how much of that property is in the floodplain? Is it all in the floodplain or it sounds like there's a rise that may not be, or I'm just curious.
It's, it's just the part that's right along the river, um, and right across the road. It goes uphill.
Okay.
So we think, um, on the bottom, the bottom purple parking that you see that we kind of did longways there, that one I think is probably questionable. We have to see if the county will allow parking to be built with in that area. Um, but it goes, from that point, it goes uphill.
Okay. All right. Well, I was just, you know, it does affect what you can do as far as any permanent structure, but I would think hopefully parking with gravel is okay, but you have to get that checked out, I guess.
And there, there is a, um, a current, a house on the property that, um, they've actually done renovations to over the past couple of years. Um, and it's an old house. It was a cabin. It was built in the eighteen, I think in the eighteen hundreds, and I don't, I don't have that in front of me, so I don't quote me on that date. But, um, it's actually can be considered a historical landmark.
Right, yeah.
So we've already reached out to Martin Burke, um, just to get some, some research on that. Um, so there will be some, there's also archaeological, um, sites within the property. So we will have to work with, you know, the West Virginia Department, you know, Department of Culture and History and, um, and with, with Jefferson County landmarks to make sure that any potential improvements in the future, um, you know, all the historical values stay, stay intact. Um, but there's a beautiful pavilion that's already built there. Um, and it's just, like I said, it's, it really is a wonderful piece of property. Um, and to come up with property along the river right now is, is really difficult. So we want to take advantage of it when we can.
Right on. Any, any further questions for Ms. Myers? All right. Thank you, man. That's, that's good news. Hopefully you guys can close this.
Hopefully. It's been a long process. Hopefully here in the next few months, we'll have some, uh, have some movement if we get some of these grants.
Sounds good. All right, well.
Bye.
Okay, man, we're at, we're right on schedule and we've almost done all new business and everything too. So we're, uh, agenda item number six. Does anybody need a break or anything? You good? All right. So this is, uh, Dr. Gibson, Superintendent Jefferson County Schools. A general discussion on how impact fees are used by the County Board of Education. Uh, thank you, Ms. Gibson, or Dr. Gibson for joining us. You're a busy lady.
Thank you very much, uh, for inviting me. I, uh, it is a much more exciting conversation than the one with the weather briefing folks earlier this evening. So a much happier conversation, let me just say. So, um, thanks a lot for the invite to talk about, uh, schools and, um, Stephanie, thanks for the screen sharing capability. So, um, I will, um, really, I just wanted to click through and give you guys some information. I understand from uh, Mr. Compton that there are several new board members who might have questions about how impact fees have been used in schools in the past and, um, how those sort of affect our operations as a system. So, um, some of this is just historical information, which you guys probably know already, but since the last um, impact fee study that you had in two thousand and fifteen, um, a little over six million dollars has gone into the impact fee account for growth for schools. Now, since the actual implementation of the system, uh, we've grown by a little over twelve hundred and eighty students. Um, you saw Tishler Vice's projection of an additional twelve hundred and ninety-eight students over the next ten years. Um, my understanding is that the, uh, concept on the impact fees all along was for gross to pay for gross. People coming into the county paying for the additional services the schools would need for those. And I think that it's very much functioned that way. And, uh, you'll have a chance to see how that's worked. Now, one of the things that I thought that folks might not be as aware of is, um, both, uh, we'll look at some projects that you've actually done with, um, impact fees, adding facilities for students. But I also think it's important to remember the multiplier effect for impact fees. Impact fees also allow us to go to the School Building Authority, um, which is, um, West Virginia Department of Education's funding mechanism for schools. So, uh, this slide basically shows you, um, over the last ten years where we've had, uh, local funding through impact fees and through bonds that we've then gone to SBA and solicited and received funding from them because we've been very successful as a school system, um, in building and in performance for our students and in being, you know, fiscally responsible for the funds. So we've actually, for every dollar and thirty-three cents that we've had, we've gotten a dollar from SBA, uh, in funding. So it's been a good, uh, it's not just straight impact fees. It's also the leverage of that to get dollars from other entities. So, um, talking about fiscal responsibility, I do think, and I'm not gonna, uh, belabor it, but there's been several um, instances where we've, uh, made decisions as a school system or our school boards made decisions um, that have impacted the extent to which we've had to use impact fees. Um, for instance, we had, uh, when I had first arrived in two thousand and fifteen, we had some pretty significant overcrowding at Wildwood Middle and Jefferson High School. And we went through a, who, uh, year-plus-long process to redistrict, uh, and move students around where we could so that we pushed out the dates when we'd need new facilities in those parts of the county. Um, we also, and I had nothing to do with this, but, uh, kudos to the board on the Bus Garage Project. Um, in essence, they purchased that, um, facility out at McGarrettie for three million dollars. Um, for three years, we leased half of that property to UFP on the other side at two hundred thousand dollars a year. And then we actually sold that half of the building to them for two point four million. So in essence, um, a pretty spectacular bus garage facility, if you haven't been out there, um, that we ended up netting, uh, zero cost for. So, uh, I think it's important when you're talking about using taxpayers' money that you also talk about um, the fiscal responsibility of the people who are, um, utilizing it for kids, uh, whether or not they've been good stewards. So, impact fees, knowing that the whole purpose of those is for growth to pay for growth. One of the things that, uh, Mr. Compton, uh, had emailed me about was a question about enrollment and student enrollment, and it's a good one. Um, as you are well aware, uh, West Virginia as a whole is losing student population and it has been, quite frankly, for several years. Uh, this is from a presentation that all, um, county superintendents and, um, school boards received, um, at, uh, before, the February before COVID hit last year, so last February, where they showed, uh, projected, uh, cumulative projected changes in student population over time in every one of the counties. And as you can see, there are exactly three counties where they're projecting, uh, any positive change in student enrollment. Um, Berkeley, Mon, and Jefferson, uh, based on all of the data that they have. Now, when you talk about those cumulative changes in student enrollment, you know that you're going to have both, you know, year-to-year changes, but you're also going to have trend that, and that's how we run our projections. So I ran for you the last ten years worth of data. And as you can see, we had a lot of growth for, you know, five, six straight years. And then um, we've had in the last two years, um, a, a drop of around a little over two hundred kids. Now, um, there's always some interesting factors within each one of those. And, you know, you need to see several years worth of data to decide whether or not you have a blip or whether or not you have a trend that's going to continue. So we give the, I give the board a presentation every year on enrollment and trend data that we want them to see. And the slide that you see in front of you right now was the one that I gave the board last year, where we broke down school by school, the population change, uh, from the previous year. And I wanted to point out some very particular areas to them. One was if you look down here at the bottom, you'll see that we had a huge drop in kindergarten students. We, we lost almost sixty kids. Um, and that actually was due to a legislative change. Um, at, at one point, you could enroll your child in kindergarten as long as their birthday fell on or before, uh, September first. Well, uh, last year, they enacted a change that, that had to be July first. So, uh, two months worth of kids, uh, who previously would have been, uh, eligible to enroll in kindergarten couldn't because they no longer met the age requirement because they moved it back by two months. Um, so I think it's always important for you to have context when you're looking at data. We also had noticed some of these anomalies in particular schools. Uh, so I had highlighted for them North Jefferson, Ranson, and Shepherdstown Middle School. And you pull those And you pull those three schools out, and we actually grew by forty-four students that year. So we went back to those three schools in particular and um, pulled the records for the folks who had um, who weren't there anymore to see um, if we could look at any trends uh, for why we might be losing folks. We went and pulled all of our homeschool data to look at that. And um, for the majority of those, they were folks who had um, either moved out of county or moved out of state. Um, particularly at Ranson, we saw the biggest change uh, attributed to folks who had moved to Berkeley. Um, at North Jefferson, um, we had fewer of those who we were able to get to send us records from where they went to. But um, several of those were for out-of-state. So again, we try to break down for each one of them where we feel like kids are going and whether or not we think this is a trend or it's a blip. But um, as far as the growth that we have seen over time, that impact fees have um, contributed to for students, this is a list of the projects for the last uh, ten years that we've run off of impact fees. Washington High, Dresswood, South Jefferson, Blue Ridge Primary, Harper's Ferry Middle, the, the Bus Garage, um, and Land for Future Growth. Uh, so I think it's important as we go through these two for folks to understand about impact fees. Um, impact fees, of course, um, can only pay for growth. Uh, impact fees can't go back and pay for repairs on uh, facilities. It can't go back and um, you know, put in an HVAC system on an aging facility. It can only um, do additions or pay for expansions of things. Um, and when we were looking and running our projections uh, from, you know, five years ago when we were looking at uh, growth, we actually, and I want to uh, thank very much the planning uh, department who had gone through and done this heat map for us uh, off of the um, they actually ran through their, their GIS planning, zoning, public um, districting, and did this overlay for us to show us where we could expect all of the growth at. Um, and then we went and did a pretty um, significant process where we looked at every piece of land available within the county. And then we did a rubric and scored it based on its uh, proximity to the growth and how much it would cost to develop it in terms of utilities. And that's how we ended up with both the future site of the Ranson campus and the future site of the Shepherdstown campus. Um, and I think the importance of that is when you do your homework, you reduce the, the future costs of build because you uh, went in and uh, did some drilling and make sure that you've got a really good buildable piece of land that is both accessible, that is going to lower your transportation cost because of where it's located in proximity to the growth. So those are the things that we've expended impact fees um, on in the past. Um, and we do have a, a fairly significant set of needs that, as I said, impact fees don't cover. Right now, uh, Jefferson County Schools has one point three million square feet uh, under roof that we are responsible for. And for those of you like me, you're just, you know, keeping up with your house seems impossible sometimes. I've got a, a front porch step that I need to fix right now. But um, for us, just the HVAC and roofs in particular are unbelievably expensive when it's snowing and we get a lot of precipitation and rain like this. Um, we have about two and a half million dollars' worth of roofwork that uh, we have to get done. And um, you know, those are just the roofs that are more than twenty years old. So um, impact fees help us cover growth because our operating funds need to go to maintaining what uh, folks have already um, purchased for Jefferson County Schools. So uh, sorry, I went through that a little bit fast, but I wanted to make sure that I um, that I covered, I hope, um, what you needed. And if there is um, any, any questions that I could answer, any data that I can get for you as you guys are pondering, I'm happy to do so.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Gibson. That was very helpful. I guess your slide that showed enrollment numbers out of fifty-two and fifty-five counties was terrifying. I mean, from a state perspective, that is terrifying.
It is. It, it is utterly frightening if we d- and again, it's a, it's, schools are just harbingers of society, you know? Uh, we just, the population loss is unbelievable. They had another set of slides that showed population gain and decline in terms of age groups. And the age group that had the biggest decline was females aged eighteen to thirty-eight, I think, which are women in childbearing years, raising families, and they're just not here.
That's great. The only other thing I have before I open up to other commissioners is I know the House of Delegates passed or advanced a bill today to establish publicly funded savings accounts that can be used for private school, homeschool. I mean, obviously, it's not passed or signed into law yet, but I mean, that could be a real issue also as far as enrollment numbers. I mean, what do you think about that?
Um, I, I, a- absolutely, it could. I um, I sometimes feel a little bit um, differently. Number one, I think schools need to evolve the same way other places evolve. Um, people who make the decision to uh, homeschool their kids or to place their kids in a different facility because that's what they need, they're making decisions for their family, and I think that they have every right to do that. What I think public schools should do well is for us to evolve to meet those needs. So for example, uh, Ranson Elementary and uh, Shepherdstown Elementary, one of the things that we have written into the proposals for the build on both of those schools is um, we have it set up so that we have a steam lab for students to come in, work on the computers, um, uh, use their viewsonics, uh, perform um, their uh, maker space activities with um, science, technology, engineering, mathematics. With those, we're setting them up so that they have external um, entrances and they have an overbuild so that it's a double set, meaning that in the office and that, we can staff them in the evening, cut off the rest of the school building, and have folks who are on virtual and folks who are homeschooled come in after hours when public school students um, aren't there and use the lab and use the facilities. We can staff it with a teacher and, and help support them so that people's lives need to be more flexible these days, and we need to be more flexible to meet them. So, you know, if we do our jobs well and we plan well and we give people what they need, I'm not as worried about uh, competition because y- y- you know, that's, that's just the real world. We need to be competitive. We need to evolve to meet what families need.
Thanks. Okay, so at this point, I mean, other commissioners, I'll start with Commissioner Stolper.
Yeah, um, thank you, uh, Chairman. Um, uh, Ms. Shay, you mentioned earlier that um, well, I saw this slide and there is apparent, apparently, there's a decrease in school enrollment and looks over for the last three years. Um, you also mentioned that uh, we can only use impact fees to pay for growth. Uh, do you believe Jefferson County should continue to collect impact fees?
Um, a- actually, yes, sir, I do for right now, um, for two reasons. Um, I, because I think there's some safeguards to that. Number one, um, I think that you um, the impact fees are a long-term strategy, right? So I don't think you could take three years' worth of data out of the last ten and say, "Well, that means this isn't going, we're never gonna grow again." I don't think that that's realistic. I don't think anybody does. Um, if you've looked out here around in the county and seen the housing developments and the businesses that are going up, there's no way we won't have growth in the future. Now, um, I think that that's prudent to continue to collect that, to hedge the, the bets against that because the reality is that impact fees let growth pay for growth and you're not putting it on the backs of the taxpayers who are already here. But number two, I think it's important to know that you have a safety mechanism in those impact fees. Um, I, I, I think sometimes the fear is, "Oh, well, we'll collect these impact fees and you won't have growth and you'll use them for something else." And, and that's not the case. Legally, we can't use them for anything else, and we're not the ones who decide, the county commission. When we, when we uh, purchase a new facility for growth or land for growth, we have to come to the Jefferson County Commission and ask for that money and say, "This is what we purchased and this is why we purchased it for this growth," and show you. And then you have to either give us permission to do that or not. So um, I, I think that you have some safety mechanisms built in there for that. And I think that continuing to collect them uh, for now is a, a wise, long-term fiscal strategy. And, you know, I, I don't know at what point, y- you always have the authority as a county commission, and I think Mr. Compton had, had discussed this earlier. Um, you have the authority to go back and change at some point. If you get a study and you believe there will be any growth for the next ten, fifteen years, then, you know, you can make a different decision in the future. But I don't, I don't think, based on all the data that you have, that this, that you can say that these last two or three years, especially with some legislative changes in there that led to um, dips and the pandemic, I don't think you can take that right now and say you won't ever have growth again. I don't think that's realistic.
Um, and I noticed in the operation plan, I did not see the data for the uh, enrollment in eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. And, and maybe I missed that. Is, is that in that, in the operations plan?
Well, um, I'm s- when you say operations plan, are you talking about my presentation or?
This was the one from last, I think it was this week, last, this week or last week, um, that was presented. It was like, it was about a hundred-page uh, document.
Hmm, not, I'm not sure what I, that I know. Um, are you, maybe you are referring to, we do have a um, a ten-year CEFP plan, the Comprehensive Educational Facilities Plan, that, uh, so um, yes, so that has the data all the way up through, I have, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me right now. Um, but that plan is for twenty twenty to twenty thirty. So it would have had data all the way up until it was approved um, May of, May of last year, I think. But
Okay.
If there's something that you wanted to know that you don't see in there, just shoot me an email and I can pull it for you, no problem.
Will do. Um, and has the uh, Board of Education applied for any block grants? You know?
Um, we've applied for grants, but we've applied for a huge number of grants, yes, and gotten them. We actually got a million-dollar technology, a federal block grant. Um, and, and of course, there are a lot of different kinds of grants, so if you have one in particular in mind, let me know. But uh, we were awarded this past um, September, a little bit, no, it might have been August, um, a million-dollar uh, federal technology grant uh, to purchase hotspots and uh, laptops for students who were on virtual. Um, we have also applied for an additional uh, eight million dollars in School Building Authority funds for uh, to contribute to the two new uh, elementary schools. And we were awarded a million dollars for the HVAC system replacement at TA Lowry. So, yeah, we've gotten a number of grants.
Okay, all right, good deal. And uh, you had mentioned in your presentation, presentation that uh, about being good stewards of taxpayer money. Uh, I'm just curious, can you tell me uh, how much money did the Board of Education spend on the fraudulent Emmett Domain case against Rockwell?
Um, I can hear from your characterization of that, uh, but not off the top of my head, I can certainly uh, give you for any uh, year because it's all public information. Uh, we put our finances out there like everybody else. We post up every bill that we pay.
All right, thank you. I don't have any further questions, Mr. Chairman.
All right, uh, Commissioner Jackson? I think you're on mute, but I think you said no.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Commissioner Hudson?
No, but I think Jane wants to ask some.
Yeah, I saw her hand raised, so I assume you probably had nothing to ask, so I'm gonna go to Jane last.
Okay. Um, Dr. Gibson, we've had a broadband committee and had a study done, and I can't remember which schools, but uh, the consultant said that uh, possibly, you know, putting up cell ta- towers strategically throughout the county would increase broadband for folks. And they thought that two schools would be good locations. Now, I don't have that in front of me, but I'm hoping there will be an opportunity, if we can move forward on that, that we could partner in some manner with the school board. That would be mutually beneficial. Have a cell tower on your property that would service not only the school population, but everyone around it. So, um, that's something. That's something else to put on your planning documents. I'll try to get details to you about that.
Thank you, ma'am. And, and we do very much appreciate that the community was, was really incredible in terms of letting our students, um, early on in particular, before we were able to procure all of the um, Wi-Fi hotspots and get them for our buses and into people's homes. Uh, our local businesses allowed students to come in and use their Wi-Fi while they were uh, on remote, and that was greatly appreciated. So thanks for the partnership.
Yeah. Well, it has been a challenging year for parents and students.
Yes, ma'am. Although I am very pleased and, and proud, and we'll give a shout out to the uh, board and the staff and our community um, that uh, we've been in five days a week for uh, schools since the beginning of school, except when we were forced uh, uh, out. And we're still back in now that we've been allowed back in. We're back in five days a week, which I think is really, really important. So kudos to them.
Anything further from anybody? I just have one last comment on my, Commissioner Tab, we, we want to be careful about the cellphone towers to obstruct views or anything like that, all right? So I, I'd have to look into this before I got on board with that.
But no, I, I understand that. I mean, it's, it's, we haven't made any decisions. We just got the preliminary results. So, you know, we have to see if it's even possible.
Yeah, those things are huge, so I definitely want the community input on that, so.
Yeah.
All right, I think there's nothing else. Thank you, Dr. Gibson. I think it was very beneficial for everybody.
Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate you inviting me.
Definitely. Take care.
Bye-bye.
Um, I hate, we're almost right on time. Is Stephanie here? Can you touch on your Charles Town? East Liberty Street, streetscape design and impact on county parking lot?
Yes, um, so Charles Town received a grant from the Chesapeake Bay Watershed Foundation. Um, there's been some flooding, and there is flooding when we get heavy rain on the li- on Liberty Street. And they believe that the county parking lot is contributing to that, um, as well as many other factors. It's not just the, the county parking lot. And they, um, so they applied for this grant to address the Liberty Street flooding. Uh, they received the grant and they have engaged uh, Greenway Engineering to um, look at this project. And as part of that project, they want to redesign the county parking lot. Um, and I had a preliminary meeting with them yesterday, yesterday. Um, to, with Char- the city of Charles Town and the Greenway Engineer who's in charge of the project. And I have here um, a preliminary design, so it looks like, and so they're not asking for any money from us. Um, the grant will cover everything. Yes, I, I, I liked that too. Um, and there is, uh, there are some matching funds from the city, but the city is covering all of that. So they're not asking us for any funding. Um, but they would need our permission, obviously, to do anything with the um, with the parking lot. And I have a preliminary design here, if I can make myself the presenter again.
So are they gonna, how long would they close it, I guess, is my question?
How long? Um, they have a pretty quick- They have a pretty quick timeline to get this finished, but I don't, I do not have the, the answer to that. They've told, so they're totally, our parking lot is on our capital plan to redo because it is not very efficient. We would, through this design as it's currently proposed, lose two parking spaces. But they're totally redoing the entrances to make them more efficient. And so all I, when you see all of this, the orange, kind of the pinky-orange, I thought those were parking spaces that we're losing, but they're not. They're actually using permeable pavers to do that. So that the, so that the water permeates the surface. And they're putting some green space in here. They're not asking us to approve the plan right now. They're just asking us if we want to participate in this project. And, you know, if we would be interested in having them, you know, do anything in the parking lot, or if we would allow them to do anything in the parking lot to mitigate this Liberty Street flooding problem. And I think what happens is the Liberty Street floods and it goes over onto the other side of the street where the VFW is, and there are some businesses over here on the other side of the street, which was the emphasis for the city of Charlestown to apply for the grant. So, and they're also, they want to put a planer box up here that would kept some of the rainwater up on top of the building, the courthouse, or the clerk, the circuit clerk's office here. So this is just a preliminary design, anything that they, you know, we, the commission would have to approve any final design before that happened. I do not, they have an aggressive timeline. They want to start by May. They did not say how long they would close the parking lot, and I didn't even think to ask that question. My concern was losing parking spaces at the time. Matt Mullenax, who is with Region Nine, has helped them with this grant. And he said that he would be reaching out to Commissioner Soloper to explain this project once I had presented it to the county commission to see if it's something you're interested in. I think they can do, some of the, they can achieve some of what they want to do without touching the county parking lot. But because it's a Chesapeake Bay grant, they have to address some water quality issues as well as the stormwater issue. They don't have to meet the Chesapeake Bay standards, but it does have to be, they do have to improve water quality somewhat, as it was explained to me as a term of the grant. So this is what the preliminary design looks like. Again, these are all permeable pavers and then the green is all, you know, green that they're adding. He did say that at this time, he did not have, I can move this down here. They haven't studied the, they hadn't yet surveyed the top of the parking lot. I think they were out doing that yesterday. So that this plan could change because if you, if you remember the county parking lot, it slopes downward toward Liberty Street. So if it's something that you're interested in doing, they, I think you should probably appoint a commissioner. And I'm going to nominate Commissioner Soloper since he's already on reach time. But if he doesn't have time to do it, it could be any commissioner. And of course, I will also attend those meetings for you. But it sounded like to me that it would be a chance for us to maybe get some improvements to our parking lot without us paying anything, as long as we like the design that is presented by the engineer. And we, you know, and I can ask them about the timeline for construction and how long we would be without a parking lot or with a reduced number of spaces.
I think, I think Commissioner Soloper serving was a great idea.
And I had not talked to him about that before. I threw him under the bus right now.
I don't have a problem with that at all.
Stephanie, I, I think this is a great idea and it's something we've, you know, it's got the one really big dip in it. And so I know parking lot is past due, some improvements. Can we have a maintenance look at it to make sure? I think we've got all the tanks up now. We used to have an oil tank and so forth, and I think that all those obstructions are gone now. So we could really do a good job of improving it.
Yeah, so the additional county staff that I have plans on including in this would definitely be maintenance. And also Roger, as the county engineer, to look at this plan and see if he has any, if he sees anything that's objectionable. Because, you know, it can look all well and good to me, and there could be something that's, you know, that's not right. And I think Roger would probably catch that. So those are the two additional staff that I would, that I would coordinate with before we signed off on any final design.
Sounds like a win-win situation. Yeah.
Me, Commissioner Jackson, Hudson?
It sounds good, and I agree with Commissioner Soloper being the point person on behalf of the commission.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Soloper. All right, anything else on that, Stephanie? All right, does anybody need a five-minute break? All right, let's, let's take five minutes. We'll be back here at 8:20, 8:21. We're pretty close to being on time.
Yeah, I have somebody, and they want me to go pull them out.
What, are you eating dinner there, Steve?
Yeah, I was.
Wasn't ready.
So I was driving in Rantin today near like the Little Caesars and stuff. There's a sign up that says future home of Andy's Pizza and Brewery. And you got, you know anything about that?
I just saw it on, on social media.
Is that Andy's, the Andy's Pizza on Mildred Street? Good for him. Caleb, are you here?
Yeah, I'm here.
And is Nathan here?
All right, so. Executive session, right?
Well, is it, well, are we back, Stephanie?
Yes, we're back.
Okay, so this, we're on agenda item number seven, Nathan Cochrane, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney. Nathan, what bullet points are we going to discuss tonight?
Give me just one second and let me get to my exec, or my agenda list. There we go. Yeah, I, I need to inform you about the second bullet point, the EEOC charge number there. I have a very short information issue about the third bullet point, which I will just explain. That issue is a case that was filed by Mr. Tab and was dismissed by the Circuit Court. And Mr. Tab has, I am informed, filed an appeal with the Supreme Court on that issue. But I do not have any specific information back from the Supreme Court on that. With, then with respect to the, hold on one second, I'm just going down my list. Number five, I have some information to present to you regarding the, the Emergency Services Agency, the potential ambulance or fire service boards, and a few things like that. With regard to, number nine, I have a matter to discuss with you, just to provide you with some legal update and advice on that issue. And number 11 is a Circuit Court case that had been filed against the, the commission and the sheriff. And I need to provide you with some legal advice on that particular issue. So with regard to, to those items, number two, and number nine, number 11. I, because I have some legal advice to give you and because they potentially involve some liability issues, I recommend that we go into executive session on those items. And also on the, the second item on, related to the sheriff's appointment back in number one.
Nathan, just a quick thing, real quick. Going forward, can we have these numbered, not bulleted? Once we get past like bullets or turn the countdown here and just.
Ask the staff to do that for the next agenda. I'll ask them to number them instead of bullets.
Okay. And then Nathan, 147, Article 147, I thought we were going to discuss that. Is Will not available tonight?
Yeah, he, no, and so I will be sure that he's here for the next time.
Okay, because that thing's been outstanding for quite some time now.
I know, it's fairly innocuous at this point, but I would prefer for him to describe it to you since he handled it.
Okay, so we're going to executives, I'll make the, Commissioner Soloper, do you have a question? Okay, I'll make the motion just so it's clear to the public what we're going in executive session for. So I move we go into executive session to seek legal advice for the items. Discuss of EEOC charge number 5332021-00262. Report by counsel as previously assigned by commission, creation of the Jefferson County Fire Board, Jefferson County Emergency Ambulance Service Board, and organization of Jefferson County Emergency Services Agency, including potential structure, financial issues, and matters related thereto. Discussion of Department of Interior Inquiry of Historic Landmarks Commission Activity for docket number PCRNPS04-20. Discussion of Jefferson County Circuit Court Civil Action Number 20-C-109. And for a personnel promotion hiring discussion with Sheriff Hanson. Structure, so. Any discussion on those? That was a long motion, but I want to make sure everybody's clear on what's going, you know, on an executive session, so.
Do, now, do we have a final number to call?
It's actually a link for GoToMeeting, and I just sent it out as this meeting was starting, so it should be at the top of your email.
Got it.
Okay, and the sheriff got that too, correct?
He did, yes. And I'm texting him, letting him know that we're getting ready to go into that session.
Stephanie, we are to sign out of this meeting, right?
If you are using the same computer, yes, you have to sign out and sign into GoToMeeting.
We have to vote on the motion.
Any further discussion on this? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed? All right, we're in executive session.
No, close out of this.
Hey Stephanie.
Yes.
I have a quick question. I just, I was just curious on this snowy night, how many people did we have in our, our regular meeting earlier?
You had quite a few. Um, I think we were up to thirty-three.
Really?
That were, that were actually attendees from the public.
Okay, I was just curious.
On the staff side, we had about fifteen.
Okay.
And we had forty-four pre, forty-four people from the public pre-registered.
And Stephanie, drive carefully going home tonight.
I will.
If you get stuck, call me. Um, actually as soon as this meeting's over, I gotta go pull somebody out now, so.
Okay, alright.
Yeah.
Well, if you get close to Lee Town, Stephanie, let us know. The loaders been in.
My husband should be able to come get me, but um, if he can, I'll keep you guys on backup if, you know, if something happens. Hopefully it doesn't.
You still there Caleb?
Yeah, I'm here.
Alright, uh, are you good to go?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so I move we come out of executive session.
Back in.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed? We're in regular session.
Mr. Chairman, I want to move the motion, move motion that we, that we request the financial director to make a determination for back pay for two corporals at the sheriff's, county sheriff's department.
I'll second that motion. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Uh, I don't believe there's any other action from us this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
At ten-thirty tomorrow. Mr. Chairman, is that confirmed? For ten-thirty tomorrow?
Uh, yeah, ten-thirty tomorrow and the, I, the county should be closed, the government offices due to snow and ice.
Yes.
I move you adjourn.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll adjourn. I'll see you guys tomorrow at ten-thirty virtually.
Yep.
Be safe getting home everybody.
Bye.